Job. So we're kind of fighting it, but the first part of that is the ambulances. We have to get the ambulances back in. We can't separate from them without having an ambulance. So we have talked to the state. We know what we have to do to get our license back. Notified the county and we have to give them years notice that we want the ambulance back. So we've done that. Now we have to finish doing our stuff for a license and it's going to cost us some money. The ambulance does bring in some money, but we're going to have to have full-time people here. So we don't decrease our service we have now, if that makes sense. So we're going to start working on that. Steve wanted me to make you guys aware of what's going on. I can run some numbers by you. Excuse me, had a cold. Right now, our total budget is around $450,000 for medical and fire. To get up to where we should be, a- a- and we have the best value in the whole probably state, I guarantee right now. Comparing our budget with Logan, 19 million, Smithfield's budget is 2.9 million. The county just up here, this little building, their budget's $4 million. So at 460 something thousand, you can see what the volunteers do for our city. But we, we are going to have to move up a little bit to continue the service that we need. We're going to end up probably somewhere around 1.5 million. We already paid the county 200,000 for the ambulance. So that will come back to us. We, we also already pay these guys through the county. So. Let me explain that a little bit. The city was stuck at 50 employees for a long time. And we needed to get full-time guys down here to start doing the admin administrative stuff. So. We made a deal with the county that they would hire two of our guys because we didn't want to go over that 50 employee thing, but the city would reimburse them for what they paying. So these guys are actually paid by the county, but they're working for the city. If that makes sense in a loophole. Because we are separating from them, we need to get these guys off of the county and into hiring city payroll. And to do that, we're going to have to hire a full-time chief as well. The URS system, retirement system requires a full-time fire chief to hire. Full-time firefighters. So we're not, we're not trying to bring this to a vote or anything right now. We're just making you aware of what's coming up. And we will give you a lot more details on what's going on, but just, just want to clear the water right now for everybody and catch up what we're working on. Okay. Any questions that?
So with the county-wide district, fire district, how much? Would or does or will hire them? What, what's the, I'm assuming you're talking about we get an ambulance and we do the same thing Logan did. We withdraw out of that district.
Right.
We have to give them a year's notice.
If we don't withdraw, the estimated taxes will go up $426 a household in Hiram. So if we do, we can do it for a lot cheaper than them. We're not real sure exactly where it's going to land. Wes has been working with us a lot. But it would be closer to somewhere around $60 a household. And if we can keep Nibbly with us, we cover, that will help bring that down even more. We've also already talked with Wellsville and Millville. They, they want to join our ambulance service when we get it going. So. That's going to be our part upfront. If we do it by ourselves, once we start, we know some of the other communities will come in and join us.
And so they would withdraw also. And then just like we provide buyer service for them right now, we would still do so and.
They would just.
So basically we would collect $60 or whatever that number happens to be from households and other communities as well.
Exactly.
Wherever those negotiated agreements end up.
Hiram has, in, in my estimation, Hiram has probably the premier fire department. Not only in the valley, but I think of probably any volunteer station in, in the state. You know, Tony has a waiting list, I think of volunteers that would like to be on, on the department, if I'm not mistaken. And you know, I'm, I'm just so impressed with the training that you put them through and that all of our volunteers are, have required, are required to receive. And so by going with the county, if I'm not mistaken, Tony, correct me, we, we dilute what we have.
Right.
We lose, not only do we lose equipment, but now we pay the county for maybe a fire station that's going to be built up in Clarkston.
Yes.
And, and so we, we really dilute what we've, you know, what's taken 70 years to, to build and, and create. And it has really become a premier department and one that I think our citizens should be extremely proud to have. And now we add ambulance service to that. I think that just, in, in my opinion, I think that just is, is a great. Blessing for our city to have ambulance service right here.
Yeah, we can control it. We have, you know, it, we're not relying on somebody else, another entity. Like he's saying, if they go somewhere else. We're without an ambulance until it comes from somewhere else. We can run a squad there, but we're without that ambulance service. And, and then we're paying them to do everything and that's all going back through the county. We should keep that money in our city. We should be building.
You too probably have the answer. Maybe you don't. So. I think we owe it to the people of our city to compare the fire district. I know either one of them is going to cost us money.
Right.
I mean, so like a doctor that you guys have to call for an ambulance. I mean, can you guys put them numbers down? So we can actually see as a council in the city, what, I mean, what, I mean, dollars.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Yeah, Wes has been working on it since he hired on it. And it's, yeah, that we've been running all different ways of how this best way to do it. But obviously I live here. I don't want my taxes to jump up. And, and I've talked to Millville, I've talked to Nibbly. I says, do you have a problem with the service? Do you think you need better service? They're completely happy with what they have. Especially for a cost of quadruple and what.
And I know what I've heard a number for a fire station somewhere between.
Yes.
Is, is, is eight billion bucks.
Yeah, that's what, that's where they want to start.
And that will be the first thing that the district does.
Yes.
Yeah. And just to note on that too, is like with Nibbly, if we go full-time and have the ambulance, we've just cut their response time in half. So now our response time is going to be quicker than if they had their own volunteer department. So just having those full-time guys here getting out the door quick. So that's going to increase their service, which, you know. They're willing to pay for better service, right? And just a note to Cash County billed over $600,000 in ambulance services last year. You can count on collecting about 300 to 350,000 of that. So yeah, the 1.5 million seems high. But when you account the revenue, what we're already paying for the service, really you're going to be bumping our budget up. It's going to cost about $550,000 more.
Yeah, the rest that we compensate back is what we're already paying.
But by doing our own thing, that comes back to our citizens, right? So if we're, I'm, most people and as a citizen, I'm willing to pay for better service. But I don't want to pay the triple so that people on the other end of town are having better service, right? I don't think that's fair. We want to keep it in our, in our community is what we're trying to do.
So you mentioned that you need to give the county a year's notice before withdrawing.
For the ambulance.
For the ambulance.
Yes.
Has that already been initiated or is that? When, when was that notice given?
So, so we have to re-sign in November for the next year.
Okay.
And we have to give them a year's notice. So we take over the ambulance service the first of 2027.
That is the goal. Now if we're contracted with them, so if it doesn't pan out. Like if we decide that's not the direction we want to go, we still will have ambulance service.
Yeah, and, and anybody with Logan, Smithfield, GoCross can give us a bid. It's like any business for ambulance service. And we can accept any one of them. So.
Okay.
Yeah, people want the service, so.
So one more question.
Okay.
Would you guys get two ambulances?
We'd start with one. We have to get a second one.
As we're talking, we're going to be amended.
Well, but if Nibbly contracts and Paradise, they still have.
And once they contract, then we see that income coming in, then we can afford another.
If there's like a multi-vehicle car crash, you still have the same thing with fire. You still have mutual aid.
Yes.
So I don't know, still may be gone on a mutual aid call. It's not.
I heard you say. I heard you say that we contract with Nibbly right now and Millville.
Yes.
And when this happens and we bring in ambulance here, what about our neighbors to the south, Paradise and Avon? Do they have a station up there, but would we contract and help them?
They will have the choice to choose between us or the county, depending on what the county is doing with all this. Same with Wellsville. I already know Wellsville is going to contract us because I talked to the chief over there regularly about it.
Sure.
The other thing about that is we're talking about bringing full-time people in to run an ambulance. But that also means we have full-time people for a fire truck. So that also cuts our response time in less than half for fire.
And if that happens where we have a county building over here, would we be able to negotiate some kind of a purchase from them and?
You're, you're on Steve's track.
That's a bottom line paper.
That is.
And that's the advantage we have with the volunteers is if we get a fire call and the full-time guys go on a fire call. We have volunteers that can come in and we'll have them on call and staff that ambulance where if they go on a fire call, their station's out of service. We have amazing volunteers. Me and Chris go to the volunteers to get our shifts covered. And we've never once had an issue getting a shift covered. They, they come in and we tell them they're getting paid like $12 an hour and they're like, oh, we get paid? And it's, it's awesome. I was sick this morning and 20 minutes I had a guy in to cover for me. So we have some great volunteers and a huge asset to our community.
That's great. That's wonderful. We, we appreciate the report. More than anything else, we appreciate what you're doing. Let's have all of the volunteers stand up really. I know that handshake or that hand clap doesn't go a long ways, but it's from the heart and we want you to know how much we, we appreciate everything that you do for the city. So thank you very much. Okay, did we move to item 10B? Autumn, were we going to discuss that? Did she have a recommendation written up here?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, the summary of her recommendation for a business license. The summary is the proposed application submitted by Autumn McChronicle for Tenacity Rose Aesthetics. A skincare business located at 84 South, 400 East in Hiram. Application has been reviewed and meets all the requirements of Hiram City's Municipal Code Section 5.04.200. The recommendation is that business license specialist Keisha Rinderconnect is recommending approval for the city council with the following recommendations. Applicant meets all requirements of business license home occupation code. Do we need further discussion on that? I have some questions.
Go ahead.
I looked up what an esthetician requires, and this is from the state. And there's, there's, there's a state license that's required for, and some, some license examinations, some certificates. Certificates of completion. I'm just curious if she meets any or all of these or if we check, check this before we just give her a business license.
She's got an esthetician. She's got, she's got a license.
She'll be licensed. She couldn't operate.
Well, that's all, that's all I'm asking is. Yeah, there's a state license on there that it shows that she has. So.
Okay.
She's, she's gone through that. I, I guess my question too is for the sake of, of time. I, I, I maybe just suggest that we ponder and consider that when someone like this comes in for a business license, that the staff. After Keisha's gone through all of the recommendations and requirements and holds the individual accountable to make sure that she has everything. Do we need to bring that before city council? I, I, I don't know why the staff couldn't go ahead and approve that. So if they've met all the requirements that the city's asking for, is there a need for a city vote on that?
So, so we have a home occupation business license ordinance and Stephanie, you can help me with this. My understanding basically that this one is pretty straightforward. We get a lot of this type of license. It's pretty straightforward. It's, it's has minimal impact on the neighborhood. But I think it's basically it's felt that Keisha in this point, in this case, our. Business license specialist shouldn't necessarily be the person that has to make those decisions on whether. This is an impactful home occupation business or this is a, or, or not. This is a minor one. And so there's, there's different things, whether it's small engine repair, automotive, or you know, all these different things that people. I'm grateful that they want to work from their home and they have that opportunity. That's wonderful. But. I think it can put staff in a difficult situation to try to say this is or is this isn't something that's significant.
Okay.
So that's, that's my understanding of why we do this. And it's a two or three minute process. I think frankly, what you just went through in reading and explaining this is taken probably three times longer than most of the. Times we approve these, but it's also if the applicant can be here, it's an opportunity to meet them and, and get to know people who are doing business in our community. And, and if Jared is here, he would want to schedule an appointment. And so I probably shouldn't have said that. I'm on Zoom, but. So that's, that's kind of the reason why. On smaller things like this are really straightforward. Like you said, it.
All right.
Doesn't have to take a long time.
Any other thoughts, comments on that? Okay. All right. Well, let's, we'll continue as.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the business license for Autumn McGonigal to request home, request approval of a home occupation business license at 84 South. 400 East for skincare business.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's, let's move to 11A. Resolution, 26 dash 02, a resolution authorizing council member automatically succeed to position of mayor pro temp. So I think in this one is we talk about basically a council member who would fill in for the mayor if the mayor is absent. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's it.
And I think that that's the council then that makes the motion or. That for, I guess submits a name of a council member that he would like to recommend to be the. Mayor Pro Temp in my absence. So I'll turn that over to the council.
I'm going to make a motion that we. May name Michael Nelson to automatically succeed the position to mayor pro temp.
I second that.
I oppose.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Are there any other, any other?
If he doesn't want to, I mean, he can. It's not.
He wants to. He does.
I actually.
I guess if he opposes it. I think it's nice to make somebody do that, but.
It really isn't bad.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion to, to appoint Steve Adams.
Okay, we've got a.
2026.
Motion for Steve Adams. Do we have a second?
Second it? I'll second it.
Second it? Okay, we've got a, we've got a conundrum.
Substitute motion. Now you have to vote on the, a second it is. Does that mean you're okay to do that?
All right, let's vote on, let's vote on the first motion of Michael Nelson. All in favor of my, I'm sorry.
Rules of order, you vote on a substitute motion.
First?
Yeah, I think so. If I understand it correctly.
Okay, so we'll, we'll vote on the substitute motion first.
Mayor, can I ask? I mean, do, who wants to do, do you want to do it? I, I mean, is it?
I've done it before. It's not a big deal. He's done it before. I've done it before. It's not, I mean. I don't know. If you want to do this, he doesn't, which is fine. If Michael doesn't want to, I'm fine with that too. Just without, I'll give him the opportunity, but.
Do you want to?
The best thing about it.
I'm looking at my boss right here.
The best thing about it is if the mayor can't go to the city mayor's association dinners, you get to go to a free dinner with your spouse.
There you go. That would work. I, I'd be fine in doing it, but I mean, we've had a substitute motion, so.
Okay, we've got a withdrawal of the substitute motion and revert back to the original motion and second. And all in favor of Michael Nelson?
Aye.
Any opposed? Individual? Council member Folger?
Aye.
Council member Nelson?
I'm going to abstain and we'll just see how it goes.
All right, council member Nelson.
Aye.
Council member Rasmussen?
Aye.
Council member Adams?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes and congratulations, Michael.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move to 11B, resolution 26 dash 03, a resolution appointing power superintendent Larry Coleman. As Hiram City's Intermountain Power Agency representative and Mayor Steve Miller as the alternate representative.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 26 dash 03, a resolution appointing power superintendent Larry Coleman as Hiram City's. Intermountain Power Agency IPA representative and Mayor Steve Miller as the alternative representative.
We have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
And the second, we vote individually on resolutions. So. Mayor, council member Folger?
Aye.
Council member Nelson?
Aye.
Council member Nelson?
Aye.
Council member Rasmussen, council member Adams?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Okay, 11C, a resolution 26 dash 04, a resolution appointing UAMs member representatives. So do we understand those representatives are? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution 26 dash 04, resolution appointing UAMs member representatives. Do I need to see who they are?
No.
No, do it.
You don't have to.
Okay. Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I think just for point of discussion and clarification in the minutes, just so that if there's, would be appropriate to say that that's appointments are for Larry Coleman. And Mayor Steve Miller as those representatives.
Okay, and do we all, we have a motion and a second. So councilman Folger?
Aye.
Councilman Nelson?
Aye.
Council member Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Rasmussen, councilman Adams?
Aye.
And just for the sake of information, UAMs is our electric. What does this stand for, Larry?
It stands for Utah Municipal or Utah Associated Municipal.
Power system.
Power. Power system.
Power system. That's a trick question.
So UAMs is the broker that, that we find and purchase electricity from for, for the city. Okay, so let's go to 12A, other business to discuss improvements and possibilities to the 900 West bypass truck route.
Let's do it. Actually, Mayor, UAMs is more like a co-op. We're actually a member, owner, member of that organization. And so we don't just buy power from them. It's more for a consortium.
They're a joint, a joint action agency.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that.
But essentially that's where we get our power from. But we do have, that's why these representatives is because basically. We, it's not just by any power. We have, say, we have a skin in the game more or less of that, which is a positive thing for our city.
Good, good. Okay, so in 12A, other business, discuss improvements and possibilities to the 900 West bypass truck route. What we're working towards is to develop 900 West coming in from Wellsville. To make it a bypass for trucks coming into the compost plant, to the butter plant, to JVS. And to eliminate those trucks coming up through residential areas. We met today with West Point Dairy, who is going through a major expansion. And will be helping to complete that road from. Just north of where they are over to Second West or 1200 West County address, but the road just down from JVS. And so our goal is to widen that road and, and complete the surfacing it, putting asphalt on all the way over to 900 West. So that, so that large trucks can turn off there and stay out of our residential areas coming into town. That would be livestock trucks and the butter trucks and any trucks with regard to the compost company. We're, Kate is working with the railroad to put utilities under the railroad and that's, that's a real trick. And so he's been working pretty diligently to, to make that happen. Time is, is what they have plenty of. And so they drag us out, but Kate is, Kate Mon, our utilities, our director there is, is really doing an incredible job of. Trying to fast track and get that work done as soon as possible. We will be, we will be working to start the resurfacing of 700 North, which is the road that. Goes in front of the compost plant and it goes in front of, just on the north side of the butter plant. We'll, we'll start resurfacing that this year so that we can begin working to get that large heavy equipment off of. 101 and out of the residential areas as soon as possible. So that work has started and I'm, we're, I'm excited that. You know, that we're seeing some progress in, in getting the road widened a little bit from, that would be. Was that Fifth West all the way over to Ninth West to get it to be a wide road, which is, would be acceptable for heavy equipment and. And the semis that are bringing livestock in and out as well.
I'm excited.
So that's, that's our first, I think, that's our first major shortcut, if you will. Not shortcut, but first major accomplishment in getting heavy equipment out of residential areas. And so. That was exciting and, and good to hear. That that will take place. We're meeting with the county tomorrow with Matt Phillips and with Jess Mott. From COG on grants and, and they will be meeting us at West Point Dairy to go over the, the road as the county owns half of that road. And West Point is participating in the completion of finishing that road of surfacing it. And so we're meeting with the county tomorrow to talk about furthering it all the way down to 900 West and all the way up to 1200. West or Second West and Hiram addresses. So I, I feel good that we're making pretty rapid progress on, on making that a, a real thing. And so I, I think the hurdle that we're going to have, as I've looked into this, is, is. Forcing those big trucks to turn left on 900 West and, and take that bypass. And so I think we're working with UDOT to. To try and understand how we can eliminate that heavy truck traffic coming up through, through town. That's, that's a bit of a trick, but nonetheless, I feel like we're, we're making progress on that and feel good about what's taken place so far. So that's, that's kind of my report on that. Any, any questions, any thoughts, concerns?
I'm happy for that. I know we've discussed this.
If you can make it happen, that'll just be amazing. If you can make it happen, that'll just be amazing. I like sleep at night.
Yeah. Yeah, you get, you get them all, don't you? So. We move on to other business. B is a discussion of grant opportunities, qualifications and other relevant fa- factors. That's a, for me, that's a, a major concern is understanding all of the grant opportunities that we as a city have. And so we will be, I think, the hiring of either a city manager or a city administrator, which way ever we decide to go. That would be, I think, one of their key duties of that individual is to understand and work with the engineering companies who provide opportunities for grants and maybe Craig, you could help us understand a little bit more as far as what those engineering companies provide. But we certainly, I think, from my understanding, we've left a little money on the table in past with regard to the, the COG grants and the block development grants that I think we could utilize in our city a, a little bit more and especially with the creation of new roads that we're getting ready to put in. I think those are all applicable. And that's one thing that when Jesse Mott comes tomorrow and visits with us down at West Point Dairy, we will be talking more of that. I met with him last week and he indicated that, that he is anxious to work with Hiram City on ensuring that we get our fair share of, of county monies with regard to, to grants. And so looking forward to talking with him.
Just a couple of things with that, there's, there's multiple different types of funding sources. I don't know that I would call, I guess in a sense, COG is called, is a grant, money is grant, but it's basically, it's, it's money that the county acquires through various sources. Some of it comes from the state, some of it's tax funding. I don't exactly know where it all comes from, but it's basically tied into and locked into the county. And you as the mayor are the city's representative on the COG committee. And, you know, each city, there, there's a fixed amount of money. Each city puts in applications annually for COG projects. It gives priority to projects that are listed on their long-term funding plan, which Hiram has several that are already listed on their plan. And each of the mayors, you prepare this application, the county, Jesse's very heavily involved with that, evaluates the qualifications, they're ranked by various, I think there's about seven or eight different categories that they're ranked. That ranking goes out to all of the, the mayors of each city. There's a presentation, they, they can ask questions, find out more information, and then the mayors vote on who gets that COG funding. So in a lot of cases, you can put the best application out there you want, it can look really pretty and everything else. And, you know, if, if there's other priorities, which.
Or Logan City.
Or Logan City gets a lot of money, areas that are closer to the metropolitan area, Logan City gets a lot of money. Hiram's get some, but, you know, that's the process you go through with COG. And so you, you know, it's, it's sort of an application, well, there is an application, but like I said, sometimes it really doesn't matter how starry your application looks because of the, the selection process of that. There's Utah Recreation has some really good funding opportunities right now. The last couple of years, I think the city has talked about tapping into that. Other communities in the valley have the trail project that goes from Mendon to Wellsville. The county is pursuing, not from Hiram to Wellsville, that they're in selection for that right now is, is being funded through Utah Trails, Utah Recreation Programs. They do a lot of, you know, pedestrian bridges and other things like that. Those are competitive grants, so basically it's the, based on, you know, the, the need and how much you're putting in as a match, different things like that. And those are pretty open grant systems, we can acquire Monday, money for outdoor options. CDVG, you know, a lot of people talk about CDVG as a community development block grants. Correct me on this, Todd, you're probably familiar with this, but we have a really hard time qualifying for any CDVG funding just based on our, our income, the average income or income, it was the index, I can't remember what the name of that index is, but it's basically based on the average income of the, of the city applying for that grant. And so we do a lot of work with Snowville. Snowville qualifies for CDVG grants hand over fist, over and over and over, just because of the income level. We're going to have a struggle with that. I don't even know if we actually even qualify at all. And if we do, it's going to be pretty low on the priority list in getting those kinds of grants.
Yeah, we've been sponsors multiple times for the Norma Milk, the Family Place and the Head Start, but.
Well, I think, I think the point of all of this is, is I think that we, we need to be grant savvy. I think that we, we just want to be in tune with, you know, the state and, and other federal grants, opportunities that are out there because we certainly have plenty of need for sure. And I, that's, that's the whole point of, I think, bringing that up and discussing it.
There are, I mean, you asked about engineering companies helping with grants and things with funding. Well, there are, you know, in State Division of Drinking Water, they'll give you a planning grant. It's not super hard to qualify for a planning grant, but it's really not a grant. It's basically if you plan and you create something and you say, okay, now I want to get funding for this, they make you pay the grant back as part of the funding package if you go through them for funding. Similar things with wastewater. Transportation, you can get transportation planning grants through UDOT. I've worked with some communities that have done that. As with most things with UDOT, it comes with a lot of strings attached. And some of the cities we work with don't like what those strings come up and tell them what they have to do. So you have to look at that and say, is this grant, which anything with UDOT? For example, we've worked on a city's transportation master plan. They had a forty thousand dollar grant from UDOT to do this and they came back with the exact same results that their existing transportation plan already called for. But it was a good exercise and opportunity to verify and validate their existing plan, but UDOT required a whole bunch of, of studies and things that they didn't really like included with that. And, and then, and then you have to match that, about fifty percent of that. And so, so yeah, there's funding out there, but you have to evaluate how that works. Another one that the city has taken advantage of has been really good is sidewalk grants. The state has Safe Route to School opportunities. Some people, some cities look at that and say, is this worth it? Because again, it's funding that comes from the state and you could say it's not quite so much anymore just because concrete costs and labor costs have gone up, but you used to be able to say, if the city were to put this sidewalk in, we could put it in ourselves for the cost of arms matched to UDOT to meet all of the state requirements for, you know, different types of inspections and approvals and reviews and things like that. So you really have to look at those projects and see if it's, if it really has the benefit your city wants. But there's some out there. It's, it's really good to have this on here and have this discussion and, and, you know, there's, during ARPA, you know, there was a lot of, I don't know that you really call that a grant, but essentially it is, you know, we took, and most cities had a great opportunity to make some improvements with that. So there's, there's things that do come up. It's really good.
So a question with regard, back to sidewalks, is, does the city right now have anything in place with regard to a plan of, of where sidewalks go and are we, have we put anything in place that is, you know, a method that say, okay, last, last year we did part of Second, Second East and this year we're going to take it all the way down to Main Street? Or, you know, is there a plan in place that anyone is aware of right now?
Well, yeah, I mean, Kate, Kate has those plans and, yeah, he, the, the one that just went in on Second East, I mean, he comes up with those plans. And there's a maintenance plan, too, for the sidewalks, because.
We have a maintenance plan to go through, we've had, we've had people, you know, we use volunteers a lot of times to walk the community and, and take notes on where trees are pushing sidewalks up. And then we basically would have either a certain amount of money or, or different things like that would go towards sidewalk maintenance each year. There's been a few sidewalks where it's, it's extremely expensive to maintain sidewalks and things to replace them. And so we've actually pulled a few sidewalks out where, you know, you've got a block of sidewalk and nothing for it to connect to. And you've got trip hazards and things on that. And so there's a, a good sidewalk on the other side of the street. And so rather than having a liability of a sidewalk that's got, you know, needs a lot of maintenance and things with it, we, we've actually unused one, like a couple of blocks that we've pulled, but those are some part of our sidewalk maintenance management plan.
Yeah. You know, I, I'd like to look into, you know, some type of a schedule and identify, you know, those areas in our city where, you know, a sidewalk would really be beneficial and maybe that would be with Kate. And prioritize those.
I think she's got, she's got a plan.
Yeah.
That listed us. Same, I think, same thing with the roads. We have a road maintenance management plan where we have a certain, on, on a schedule of roads that get replaced or rebuilt or, or rotomilled and repaved, story sealed, you know, different types of seal coats and things that get put on there each year that, that we go through and look at that. With respect to roads, you know, there's some other management things that I think I've talked with the math in the past about a little bit, but I think needs to happen is with respect to maintenance is in the older part of town where we don't have curb and gutter and things. Over time, a lot of people come in and they, they haul the fill material in and they fill in the borrow pits. And then sod grows up along the sides of the roads and the water can't drain off the road into the borrow pit. And so there's a, you brought up sidewalks or roads, so water can't drain off the road and that's really deteriorating our, our pavements faster than it should. And so I think, you know, we're looking at roadway schedules, looking at, you know, it's probably a budget item, budget and time item to maintain some of these roads that, whether it's just coming along with a grader and, and scraping off or the sod builds up so water can run off the road. Also, you know, maybe in the newsletter, different things informing people in the older parts of town, you can't come in and fill in these borrow areas, that's the drainage system for stormwater. And, you know, over at Lee's, the marine over here on First North, when Fourth West there, they did that last year, the end of the last year, and not, not in the end of the year before, and filled in all that borrow pit. Now water just pongs in the road. And so I think that that's a road issue with respect to your plans and maintenance and stuff.
Well, I appreciate the information and I certainly need to look into, you know, schedule for sidewalks and, and I think that's, that's an important part of citizen.
And I bring that up with the, the roads, but recognizing we've heard over and over and over, Hiram's streets are better than most roads in the county than other communities.
They are.
And so we have, our, our road department does an outstanding job with the maintenance schedule and, and things and keeping track of that. And, you know, I'm grateful for that.
Yeah, good. Well, thank you for that, that update report. Any other comments concerned on that? All right, let's go to twelve C, consideration and appointments to the planning commission. Mr. Cassis, we appreciate your, your service on the planning commission and appreciate all the good, hard work that you do on that. Tony Ekins and I met with two individuals today and extended an invitation to serve to, to one and do we approve that name tonight? Can we do that?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so we visited with Michael Sovine. Michael, I, I think we talked about having him put a, is Michael here tonight?
He was, yeah.
He was, huh? He got tired of waiting.
He's had enough.
He is currently on the fire department. He also serves as the state DWR at Hiram State Park. Is that correct? And so he's full-time for the state, but he's also volunteer fire department or fireman and, but accepted a position on the planning and zoning and I think, did he visit with you on that, Tony? But according to the schedule that, that we have for the planning zoning, he said that would not be a conflict and he would still be able to make training and do those things that he needed to do. Michael Sovine? My Sovine, uh-huh, Michael Sovine. And so we're excited to have him on the, accept that position.
Will he be, is he being appointed as an alternate planning commission member or as a full, as a designated planning commission?
Alternate.
Okay, so we need to make that appointment as an alternate.
Alternate, yeah. So do we need to approve that then?
Yeah.
Okay, so go ahead.
May I make a motion to approve Michael Sovine as a, a alternate member of the planning commission?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and a second and individual, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I think it's, do you guys know, I'm just asking a question, as far as the difference between a, a full member of the planning commission as an alternate? You understand me?
Why don't we have Mr. Cassis explain that?
Well, what the planning commission has done recently, we have two alternates now.
Right.
So we normally have five members of the planning commission. The alternate will step in when one of the current members is, is absent that day. So if we have the alternate there in full house, the alternate cannot vote.
Correct.
So what happens is our current alternate will step into, I think Angie's place, I think Angie's the one coming off, off the list. So anyway, be welcome, our new member.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you, Scott, appreciate that. Now, Scott, you've been an alternate, right?
Yes.
And then are you moving into a full-time?
I, I moved into a full-time position about a year ago.
Okay, that's what I thought. And I appreciate what the planning commission does because they, they cover a lot of hard territory oftentimes and I think they, kind of one of those forgotten departments of our city, you know, they meet on Thursday night once a month and, and cover some, some pretty tough topics. So thank you, Scott, for being on that, we appreciate all you do. Okay, let's move to, let's move to item twelve D, budget report. Todd, is that you?
Yeah, I can, I can talk on it, I guess. Yeah, I don't know if you guys reviewed that. I mean, there's not a whole lot to talk about other than it's the six month. So we're halfway through the year. To me, budgets look good. We did get our property tax, because it was looking kind of low in November, especially in our general fund, but we got our, our tax distribution for property tax from the county. And yeah, everything looks, looks up and up to me, so we got the audit done, obviously, but yeah, on the budget. And I guess that's one little discussion item I want to have on that because I know a lot of the department heads ask me on the line item, on the line item, if you guys are good, if they're, if they, if we can move money around in that same budget, as long as the final number doesn't go over. If you guys are okay with that. Well, we, I'm just saying, just as it gets, just as it gets closer to the end of the, end of the year, no one's, no one's really over overall at this point, but as we get closer to the end of the year, they start to ask those questions like, can I go over in my equipment budget if we're under in?
The whole, the total department budget isn't being adjusted, it's just.
Right. Within, within that same budget. Are you guys? Good with that? I mean, the auditors, the auditors are good with that, but again, that's, you know, I mean, that's like a, a decision you guys want? a decision. Do you guys want, if we want to hold them, hold them strict to that?
I mean, I think we should probably set a, a number that have to go through the mayor.
Well, and also this depends on, I mean.
Switch like fifty thousand dollars out of this general fund budget item for, so, but I think, I don't know the number, but it should be somewhere.
It's kind of hard to pick a number with that because you're dealing with, if you just pick a number, you're dealing with departments like, the museum and the library that have, you know, um,
Much smaller.
Thousand dollars on this budget, this, this line item versus roads and streets. So, so you could say, okay, let's make this a, a thirty thousand dollars. Well, that's a tiny little change order on a project for the roads and streets department, but it's, yeah, it's, fifty percent or of, of the budget for the whole museum for the year or more than that. And so, so I think.
I think you guys are doing a great job.
I think that you have to give the department head some latitude, but if it's things like, we budgeted, you know, three hundred thousand dollars for a new fire truck this year and we're not going to do that. And so now instead we're going to take and, and just put that towards miscellaneous equipment or radios or whatever, something like that, I think. Probably, you know, I think that the department heads understand where some of that latitude, like you say, there's, whether it's a hard number, but it's,
Right.
it's significant budget item.
Right.
I would like to let the department.
In the past, as your position had changed.
Right. We, we try to control it and stuff, but, but ultimately it is, it is your, your budget. So, yeah. So I, I have a hard time speaking for you, I guess. I, so I wanted to get your feeling. If I can tell them, yes, the council's good with, with, with moving money within that same budget. To give them that latitude, but.
And I appreciate that you've got six eyes on it. This is, this, this is not a decision just being made by Todd that,
Right.
the mayor looks at it. I know that Wes sometimes reviews that, uh, and, you know, there are other eyes that, you know, we're talking, we're looking at this. It's not one person or one department that just says, we got to do this and it's moved. It's, it's, uh, discussed and, uh, pretty thoroughly.
Yeah.
And so, uh, we do appreciate, you know, the time and effort you put into balancing the budget, Todd. Thank you.
Yep. Yep. Yeah. So if there's no other questions, I, I think we're in good financial shape, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, twelve V, consideration and approval of a policy for submission process and deadline for city council agenda items. We have discussion on that. Right now we're at, uh, are we the Wednesday? Stephanie, is that where we're at?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. Thursday, one week prior. Are we running into any issues with that? Is there concerns? You, you would be the one that would give us some feedback on that, Stephanie. Is that cramping your style just a little bit? Is that tight?
I think setting some of these guidelines will help because sometimes Thursday night I find out that I have like five resolutions and two ordinances that I need to write. And they take time to research. Um, so just setting that, that they have to come to me a, a week or two weeks ahead and at least let me know. And then we can kind of schedule that time so that we can get working on things. And the other thing is I just want to make sure that you guys have enough time to review the information. Um, sometimes like, the last couple of weeks and, you know, even in, in the previous, um, months, you're not getting information until maybe Monday or Tuesday, but some of that information isn't to me or it's not available. Um, you know, information is coming in, we're either waiting for an attorney's response or an engineer's review. And so I just want you guys to know, if you're ever not comfortable with approving something because you haven't had enough time, that's your right to not, you know, to not approve it. But some of those times I haven't been able to control that. And I'm hoping by getting information to me earlier, that we can send those to those people that we need reviews and responses by. So even if I put the agenda out, like, um, Tony, our city planner said, well, I can't get it to you Thursday by five, Steph, because I have, um, planning commission the second Thursday of every month. And depending on what happens there, I need to have it on the third week. And I'm like, Tony, that's okay. Like, that makes sense. It's not you holding up the process. And so, you know, we will make adjustments for those things, but it's more, it's really more just so that we can provide you guys the information ahead of time. And setting a procedure so that we can say this is what we follow.
I do feel like that if we can get information by Friday or Saturday, it gives us a kind of the weekend and not that I want to work on weekend, but sometimes Thursday comes here pretty fast. And, uh, I have other assignments that I take care of, but through the week. And so I, like when we had this special meeting on Tuesday, while that was a short week and it was pretty rough to try to get all that through, but by getting it early, I know it's a waterfall effect. And by getting it to you early helps us, I think, a lot. Because I don't think people realize how much there is to review in all of this.
Oh, I, I don't know how you guys do it, honestly, in that short time where you guys aren't here all week listening to the discussions that are going on. But we will do our best. There will be changes, you know, that come and we'll, we'll get you the information as soon as we can. But this just sets a guideline, a standard for what staff needs to do.
Sure.
That we can provide. And so if you're okay with that, I just need you guys to approve it because the mayor sets the agenda, but I wanted to make sure that the city council is okay with the guidelines that I mentioned.
So we need to make a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve consideration approval of a policy for submission process and deadline for city council agenda items. Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, that probably ought to go to, I also saw it in the newsletter. Just a note to the public, I think, as well for citizens to understand.
Most, I mean, we can do that for sure. Most of the things that, unless it's somebody that just comes in and says, hey, I want to come and talk about this, then you can decide whether to put on there or not within these guidelines. But most of the action items that come either through, um, you know, development and those types of processes, those schedules are already put in the ordinances, things. And, you know, and I think, I guess if it's a, I don't, I don't, I mean, you can put it in the newsletter if you want. Most people are going to go like, what's this talking about? But.
I think in the article we could put, you know, you have a specific item, deadline agendas are five so that, you as citizens can review the agenda over the weekend. We could also put in there about public comments. If you come, they're limited to three minutes and kind of give people an outline of what, how the process of city council.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great idea for.
If somebody's interested and also, you know, let people know that they can watch now that, you know, on YouTube and we could just kind of go over council process in an article.
Good, good.
We could do that.
Okay, let's move to, uh, um, twelve, F, review of city council assignments and citizen committees. Uh, so we've rearranged, uh, excuse me, the committees a little bit and actually created a couple of new committees that I'd like to propose, uh, to each of you. There is one change on this that, uh, will be different, uh, and that would be that, uh, Councilman Nelson is, has museum under board rep and I'd like to move that back over to you, Craig, if that's all right.
Okay, let's see, so that, so that's.
So you would have the Hiram Library and Museum Foundation and then also serve as a board member of the museum.
Okay, so it's, okay, you know, it's technically not a board member, but it's just for, you know, the matter is just.
Liaison.
It's a liaison.
Not a board member, just a.
Yeah, and same thing with the, same thing with the library. They're not on the library board, they're a liaison, but.
Okay.
So what was that adjustment? So, so adding, so that would be over the, in fact, the Hiram Heritage Foundation, the irrigation, which that is a board position. Um, the, again, the, the, the foundation is again, is just a liaison with that.
Well, let's, let's start over and go through each one of them. I'd like for, for those, uh, on, that are watching on YouTube and those that are here to kind of understand more about these committees.
That's a good point.
So, uh, Councilman Adams, we've, uh, assigned him to be over the, uh, night out against crime. He and his wife have done an incredible, incredible job with that. And also to work on the Fourth of July parade. And I'm going to call it a committee because we have more than one councilman that we're going to have working on the Fourth of July. Uh, so we work there and, excuse me, committees and other reps, he'll be working with homeowner association rep, Tree City USA program, uh, the cemetery committee, and that's a, that's a new one that I don't believe was, uh, on prior, uh, committee members. And then also, um, well, that's it because we've moved fire and EMS over to Michael Nelson, who is over emergency preparedness. But those, Steve, are yours. And let's just talk briefly about, uh, cemetery committee. What we, uh, what our thoughts were there, excuse me. Um, we have a number of citizens that, uh, would like to be involved in some form of, uh, committee for the, the, uh, the city and helping to beautify and to help. And I think it would be, uh, the cemetery is one place that we could, uh, help out the city with a citizen committee and, and, uh, just helping to beautify the cemetery and keeping it, um, you know, an attractive place to die. I guess, uh, but, um, there are, there are individuals there that would be willing to serve on that committee. You know, we can get with you and start talking a little bit more about that, but uh, I think that's, that's just a, a great place for us to involve citizens in the community to, to help.
Would you want Keisha involved on that too, or not?
So then would he kind of work with me if I'm on the beautification?
Correct.
That would be, okay.
Very similar.
All right.
Yep. So Keisha's still the sexton as far as the cemetery. She, she is, will remain in that position. Uh, you will work with her maybe just to, uh, to notify her that, you know, we're working with a committee up at the cemetery on, on areas and, and keeping it, uh, helping the summer crew, uh, you know, trimming and, and around the headstones and, and maybe go a little bit further in, in making it, uh, an attractive cemetery. And so we've actually had, I've had citizens called, members of the community that said, hey, you know, we're happy to help anywhere that, uh, you think that we could fit on a committee and do anything, we, we're happy to help. And I, I think we want to involve our, our residents all that we possibly can. So we created the cemetery committee and that's part of what that is.
Okay.
Uh, council member Rebecca Fulger, we've asked her to oversee the Easter celebration and then be on the Fourth of July celebration committee. And also serve as, I'll come back to that in just a minute, but that's, that is a new assignment. And we've also, um, asked Rebecca to serve on, as a rep and on a committee for the school liaison rep, um, which she's very qualified in doing, and the inclusion committee. And that is also a new one, the, the inclusion committee. And what, uh, what I had in mind when we talked about or created this committee is we have, uh, we have an incredible Latino population in, in our city. And I, I think that we, we need to do more, I think, to, uh, be friends and to help them know that we care about them and that they're an integral part of our community and to, uh, make them a part of, of, of this town, not to, uh, not to separate them from, from our city, but to include them. And so the inclusion committee, um, you know, and I've talked to two or three and asked them, what can we do for the Latino population in our city? And, um, you know, some have said, you know, it'd be fun if we had a Cinco de Mayo celebration on the, on the square for, uh, for the Latinos.
They don't actually celebrate that. That's an us thing.
That's an us thing?
Yeah.
Well, that came from them. That wasn't, that wasn't my idea.
It did?
Yeah.
That's surprising.
Didn't surprise me. It sounded real good.
Because that's kind of an American thing. It's not a Mexican thing.
Uh, but nonetheless, I think the inclusion program committee is just to, to find ways to, uh, you know, to fellowship and, and to kind of bring them into the community and let them know that we appreciate, you know, the good things that they do. And, uh, and so that's, that's kind of the thinking on that, that committee. Also.
Mayor, can I do?
Sorry. Please. Go ahead.
Way back when, there was a luau when somebody moved into town. And, you know, and that brought this whole city together. So I think anything's possible.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking that too. So, um, and I think that's great with the Hispanic community, but we have other people in the coun- in our community too, from other countries. And I was thinking maybe just do like a cultural night.
There you go.
And have like islanders and I teach in the English Connect program and I have people from Thailand that we're teaching English to and so that, that live here in Hiram. So I wouldn't just limit it to the Hispanic community, but I would, I would reach out to other communities as well.
Can we put you on that, uh, that committee with Rebecca?
Sure. Yes, she can be my Spanish speaking.
Yeah, I'll be your Spanish speaker.
Thank you.
The museum has held several cultural nights already. It's part of their regular programming and things and they basically, have, you know, food and treats and just refreshments, things from, you know, different cultures. And, you know, it's, the last one was fairly well attended. Um, but anyway.
Yeah. So, let, let's, uh, let's.
So, Mayor, real quickly, sorry, before we move on. So this new committee, am I to put together a committee? Or are we to put together a committee and oversee the committee and move forward with planning this? Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood.
That would be great. And there again, let's involve.
We're in it together.
I think working with Hispanics would be.
Yes.
Good idea.
So.
Okay.
Mayor?
Please.
Sorry. Uh, celebration on the Fourth? Did we decide that we're going to try to do something on the square?
Uh, we're going to have that discussion. Yeah, let's, uh, let's wait because we've got more here and we'll come back to that. I think, uh, we want to get through this here. Also, uh, Rebecca, we have you as the library rep.
And I attended the board meeting last night.
Wonderful. Good. Okay. Uh, Michael Nelson, we have you down, celebration of Hiram and, uh, uh, that is not just the Fourth of July, but that is, uh, uh, I think any opportunity to celebrate Hiram and to promote Hiram.
Founder's Day.
I, I think Hiram's birthday, Founder's Day and, and other, I think we want to have, um, have a recognition of, of sorts in, in good ways, uh, not just the Fourth of July, but if there's other opportunities that we can, we can promote and celebrate, uh, I think that would be very fitting. We have you as an emergency preparedness and also we, we brought over fire and EMS from Steve because fire EMS kind of blends in and is a subtitle of emergency preparedness for sure.
And you've done a really good job with that. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but he has done an exceptional job the last, you know, couple of years with, uh, emergency preparedness. I just, I think you should be recognized for that. It's come a long way. It's come, you put a lot of work into that.
That's great. And also, uh, we brought over, um, let's see, Michael.
Business.
The business rep. We, we took that from, uh, moved that into your slot as well. So, uh, we've thought with your degree in, uh, in business that that would be applicable. And so we've given that to you to serve under that, uh, that title as well. Uh, and we can go in depth on these at a later date as to kind of what the thinking and expectation is on, on these committees assignments. And then, uh, we've moved museum back over to Craig, so you still have historic preservation committee.
Okay. Is there a committee already established for that?
There is, yes.
Who's the contact point there? Um, it's typically run through the museum, but, uh, part of the city's ordinances is that there is a historic preservation commission. Um, the, the ordinance requires that you evaluate, um, structures for historic content on a, on a rotating basis. I think it's a, a ten-year basis, um, which that timeframe is coming up here in twenty twenty-six, I believe. To go back through and, um, basically canvas the city. To go back through and um, basically canvass the city. We keep a track of. A whole book record of which homes are, still have historic content. Um. It's, it's kind of interesting now that I think that it's any home after over than forty years old is historic, which. Um, you know, originally was just the old downtown part of Hiram. Um, that area that has to be canvassed is ever increasing in size. Um, but we've, from the last time we went through that process, I have a very good. Um, database and record of things to go through. Um, some of the challenges were. Sorry, I don't know if I'm gonna take this much time to go over this right now, but I can meet with Michael later, but. Uh, it is a separate commission that is already established. There's, yeah, there's a committee or a commission that's. Already has members um, on that. We meet, um, we meet. If not monthly, every other month, um, the Hiram, the Hiram Founder's Book that uh. Was published in Hiram, it's available. That was a, uh, that was a product of the Hiram Historic Preservation Commission. That, that put that together and, and did that. Um, so it's not just, um. You know, the home assessment, that's the ordinance requirement is the assessment of, of historic homes, but um. There's, there's the, the, the working on a history of. Of all the mayors that have been in Hiram and, and you know, trying to pull records from, from what they did during their administration. Uh, what were important points of changes and things that happened in each different mayoral administration. Through the beginning of Hiram. And so that's another project that's underway right now. So.
Alan's working, I mean, um, I'm trying to think of his.
Roger.
Roger's working on.
Roger has been working on that. Um, he's on a mission right now. And so, but he, he initiated that, uh, was a tremendous, had a tremendous. Amount of involvement with the Founder's Book as well, but.
Okay, no. Okay, let's maybe continue that offline and, and, but you have a pretty good idea there of what uh, what the expectation is. Um, so we've covered, I think, everything on Michael and uh. Naylen, we uh, have gone to uh, National Day of Service as one of your assignments. Um, and, and I guess I'd like to really see that as a major promotion in, in our, our community. You know, that, that's one that kind of just is there and I think it's, hasn't had a lot of advertising, but I think. We could get the uh, I'd like to see us get the city involved in that National Day of Service. Um, in finding good service projects that are worthwhile and that are meaningful. Uh, that we get the community involved in. Last year, I know that we. Had a pretty good group up at the cemetery for a little while. I believe there was another group up at the canyon, uh, at the CC camp. That were cleaning a little bit, but I, I would really like to find some real meaningful service projects that. That we could really get involved in. And so. Uh, if you'll help us support the National Day of Service and then also the Fourth of July, uh, patriotic program. Um, if we could head that up as well, uh, with your connections. Now, this year we do have our patriotic.
Speaker.
We have our speaker lined up, um, Ron Fox from uh, the Historical Society at State of Utah. Um, this year is a big year. This is America two fifty. Two hundred and fifty years. And so we want uh, we want a celebration. Um, that really denotes, I think, uh, our founding fathers. I think we want to focus and really. You know, pay uh, tribute to them and make this a special Fourth of July in all aspects. And so. I would like to maybe sit down at some point, Steve, with you, let's talk about. The parade. I want, I guess I want some ideas.
Tuesday.
Pardon me?
Tuesday, five thirty.
Is when we're gonna talk about the parade? Uh, I'd just like to maybe voice a thought or two on the parade. Uh. I, I would like to, maybe I'm old fashioned, but I would love to see uh. Uh, I remember when we used to have uh, you know, a lot of the churches uh. Put together floats, wards. Um, I think we could get our um, Emmanuel Baptist. Brothers and sisters to put a float together and, and enter it in. I, I just think, I think I'd really like to see if we can start promoting more.
Community.
Community and uh, and not so much commercialism in our, in our parade. Um, I, I, I just think we need to throttle that back as far as uh. Maybe the advertising for commercial vendors, uh, and maybe focus more on uh. Let's focus, uh, let's make our focus, uh, America two fifty this year, kind of a theme for the parade. And focus on that. And I think let's uh, let's get back to, to country a little bit.
So.
Thoughts?
Mayor, no, I, I like that. But jumping back just to July Fourth celebration, how do you envision that tying in? Is that? Like was mentioned, the city square festivities afterwards, after the parade? Is that what we're getting back to?
You know, there again, um, I sure enjoyed and appreciated the, the activities that we had on the square at one time and. Uh, when they were worthwhile and it was, you know, kind of a family type event. I certainly. Uh, enjoyed those as, as, as a youth and, and growing up. Uh, I'd like to have a discussion on what we could bring back to the square that. Um, that keeps people, you know, in town a little bit and gives them something to do and. And uh, eat a hamburger and, and uh.
Pretty sure the grease pig chases out.
Yeah, well, I've done that and my wife says, no, you will not be doing another grease pig chase.
She did.
Uh, we had a good one. Uh, I think Alan Bear and Ron Camick won the pig. Took two of them to catching, but uh. Nonetheless, I think we can have that discussion. Uh, somebody said, well, what about um. A candy drop from a helicopter or ping pong balls and, you know, have the city give prizes away or something that. Would entice people to stay and, and uh, celebrate a band and, you know, something that's going, but.
Concerts.
We can discuss that and I think it would be good to uh. Uh, maybe, or not maybe, but I think it would be good to include citizens, you know, residents from the community to serve on that committee and get input.
You definitely.
What we could do. That's, that's really what I think we're trying to accomplish. So.
We can talk with you a little bit later about some things that have already been happening with that.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, also you, council rep. And then the Hiram Beautification Committee Chair, we talked about that a little bit, you and I, and uh. Felt like um, we can identify areas in our community that we could uh, clean up and, and, and make more attractive and. And I think that's where um, I, I had the idea, the thought of, okay, there, there's certainly individuals in our community. Um, that don't have the uh, capability of. You know, cleaning up around their yard. They just don't have, maybe, maybe they're aged and uh, just don't have the ability to do that. That maybe we as a city can, can pitch in and, and help them if they're willing or if they're desirous of that. There's um, probably um, you know, areas that uh.
Could maybe combine that with the National Day of Service.
Could do all of that. So that, that's one that I think we can get creative and. And uh, there again, we have. Residents that uh, certainly want to help and, and be a part of. So, and then also the board rep on the senior center.
And I will tell you, I went to eat lunch with them yesterday at the senior center and. Quite a few of them commented that they wanted to see something on the square for the Fourth.
Oh, did they?
So, yep. There were several of them that approached me and asked about that. Yeah.
Just really briefly with that, when we had the parade for, for so many years, when the parade started at noon. Um, we just started losing attendance at the square really quickly. Uh, we had several years and if you can, if you were here, remember, we had activities and things and, you know. People just didn't stay because it prayed started at noon. By the time it gets over. Um, you know, they'd come for watermelon and we did watermelon and then. Nobody was there. It was, it was just pretty much empty. And um. By moving the parade to ten o'clock, we basically said. You know, it's just earlier in the morning. That's been, I, I think a favorable thing, but. I think that opens up a lot more opportunity to do something at the square because. Families, whether it's a family barbecue or picnic or whatever, they, at a certain time of the day, they just, it's time to be home. And other activities going on.
Yeah.
It's super hot. And so if we start the parade at ten. Think that opens up a lot of opportunity to do something at the square.
Yeah.
And Robert's already been looking at that and talking about it.
So, and you know, while we're on that topic, um, and there again, um. I think, I think sometimes the parade can be too long. And, and I think we really want to, in my opinion, I would really like to see us. Uh, vet the can, vet the entries. Maybe, maybe change the classification a little bit, or maybe we have commercial individuals that want to put something in. I think we charge them. For the advertising or uh, I, I don't know. We, we need to discuss that because I'd. I'd love to see every ward in Hiram. Say, we're gonna enter a float. And so we're gonna say, let's put a limit on how many. Entries we have in the parade. And uh, do you know offhand how many we have?
Last year was a hundred and fifteen, eighteen, something like that.
And how long did the parade last? What was it about a?
It actually went pretty fast last year. It was a pretty quick one, forty minutes.
An hour and forty?
I was just thinking under two hours.
Under two hours. Anyway, I think.
There's been parades well over two hours.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I think we just wanna, we want to make it a parade. In my opinion, I, and, and uh, so I think we, we talk about commercial vehicles and uh. We want those a part of the parade or not and uh, and maybe kind of get back to that. That uh, era where we had two floats.
I completely agree with that, support that entirely. Just explaining some of the challenges and difficulties. Several years ago. We did make a very, very strong concerted effort to um, promote and advertise and to get participation from. Wards or different congregational groups. We had one float entry. And that was my ward because I was serving as bishop and I kind of twisted some arms. And so, um, that was the only one. And so you can promote and advertise and things, but. Um, over time, yeah, over time, we can, we can certainly build and promote that and it will happen, but it, it's. Doesn't come easy.
Yeah, yeah. No, nothing comes easy that we want, uh, that's gonna be good. So. Uh, Tuesday at what time?
Five thirty.
Five thirty? Okay, you know, we'll, we'll visit then, but. So did we take care of yours? Were your assignments clear?
Yep.
Good there? Okay. And then uh, uh, Craig, uh, we still have you on the Fourth of July fireworks. You do a great job with that, by the way.
Yeah, it's been wonderful. Actually Paul's been doing that. I've never done that before.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well.
Paul's done awesome, but yeah, he set things up pretty well.
All right.
Did he give you the context?
He hasn't, not yet. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then also the uh.
I can't take, uh, Paul's done a good job.
Thank Paul then and.
Yeah.
We'll expect nothing less from you.
I hope you're not. I'll probably have like four years in a row when they shoot them off into the ground.
Uh, Christmas celebration. Uh, tell me what, what is, what is that? What's the Christmas celebration?
Well, it used to be for a lot of number of years, we had. We would go up to do um, Hiram Day at Hardware Ranch. You remember doing that, bringing kids up there and. Um, visiting with Santa and having um, refreshments and activities and. Typically wagon rides because there wasn't enough snow, but um, uh, the state changed. Um, how they're contracting for the, the rides out in the elk pasture. And we're not able to do that anymore. So the last um, five years, we've just done things here, local in the community. We had it over at the. Uh, pavilion outside by the civic center for two years. And then the last. Three years, we've done this Christmas celebration in the Elite Hall. Um, trying to get people to do decorated Christmas trees and things. Um. Uh, gingerbread house decorating contest. And then this last year we added. Um, holiday quilts. That was really, really cool. Um, but the, the first year, uh, we had about. Three or, three or four people sign up to bring decorated Christmas trees. And we had my wife decorated five. We had a couple of other people that did three. And you know, everybody like, oh, this is really cool. But there were about eight people. Um, that did the whole decorations and things. Um, but this past year we had four. Gingerbread entries. Um, three of those were people who had done it before. And so, you know, we're, we're, we're really have to evaluate the Christmas celebration on. You know, what we do. I had one person come up to me and say, oh, this is really cool, but gosh, how come there's not really trees? And I says, well, did you bring a tree in and decorate it? And they didn't say anything after that. And so, um, but that's the thing is it's really, it's a, Christmas is a busy time of year and people. Like to come. We had over seven hundred people come, um, which is pretty decent attendance. That's a. About the best we have. And we had free wagon rides up at um, Hardware Ranch. We had. About seven hundred and twenty, I think is most we had up there. Um.
Well, that's.
The Christmas celebration.
Let's just find us.
We'll do something.
Think about that, but.
It's important. We'll do something and we'll work on it.
And I think in all of these, I think we, we want to involve the, the community all that we possibly can. Uh, you know, there's good ideas out there and I think the more we can involve uh, our, our residents, the more. Um. Successful we're gonna be.
I agree. So I had one. Twenty twenty four Christmas celebration. I was, after the first year of having three tree entries. We had sign up sheets for people to help and with whatever capacity. Uh, trees, gingerbread houses are just to help with the event. The next year. I had about forty people sign up to help in twenty twenty five. And when I reached out and approached those people, one person respond, responded to that. So. One person of all the people who have actually took the effort to sign up, were willing to come out and help to next year. So. And community involvement sounds really wonderful, but. We really need to build it in our community and every other community because it's not to be a downer, but it's a dying thing.
Well, let's work to change that.
We can do that.
Yeah. And then we have you on the, as the recreation rep now. Is that the car show and?
No, the car show is, is a museum fundraiser.
That's a museum fundraiser?
So, yeah.
Okay.
That's all through the, through the museum. The recreation, we, um, well, Paul was a recreation rep previously. Um, and managing, that's managing all of the sports things. That's your, um, your baseball, soccer.
That's Robert.
Um, and things and Robert, you know, that's, that's his full-time job now. And so, um, you know, recreation rep would be, I, I think, I guess I'm. Open to what that, what you think that looks like, but is that. Working with Robert and supporting him because Robert's really, I mean, he's. Anyway, you know, recreation has been, in the past, it's all been all the sports.
Yeah.
At least.
Okay. All right. Well, I think let's work with Robert. We may need to tweak that one a little bit, where we do have a full-time rep now. Um, but uh, let's discuss that one.
And, and, and Robert. Stephanie, correct me, but his, his job responsibilities isn't, as I understand, it's not just recreation. He's been. In this last year, since he was hired, has been involved in helping with museum, a number of museum activities. Um, I don't know about his involvement at this. Actually, I think he's been involved at the senior center with helping with some of the classes as well. Different things.
His title is um, community event and recreation.
So, so he's been Fourth of July. I expect he will be involved in, you know, some of those. Events and activities. And so he's a resource. He's a, a staff resource for. Whatever, whether it's beautification or, you know, a lot of these different.
Yeah, I've actually talked to him about a few of my assignments.
Yeah, good resource.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And then Craig, we have you on the Hiram Library Museum Foundation and also the Hiram Marigation. I think you're familiar with both of those.
I am, yeah. Just, I don't know if it matters on here, that, that foundation's. Has legally been renamed the Hiram Heritage Foundation.
Hiram Heritage, okay.
Yeah, which basically it doesn't just work with. It was established, it was established basically when um, the library. Building, library museum building was, uh, there were fundraising for that. And then it just, it's continued on, um, supporting. Historic preservation projects and things. Um, the Elite Hall is part of the Hiram Heritage Foundation. And so that's the reason it was renamed. It's just not limited to library, museum.
Okay, good.
Sorry to. Sorry to have that much.
And you, on the on the irrigation, you're familiar with that, and you know that we have a new board member there?
Yes, I know Jack Grassley, I know Jack.
Yeah, okay, all right. Uh so these are committees, uh you know, they're gonna be tweaked a little bit, I'm sure that they're gonna, you know, mold into those, but uh appreciate your willingness to accept those assignments and uh and help further that cause as well, so. Okay, we have uh any further questions with regard to assignments there? All right, uh mayor and and council reports, uh Steve, you want to give us an update on anything that you might have at this point?
Well, just starting to get people lined up for the night out, and they're all.
Okay.
Yeah, everything. The city's ran well, I'll say that.
The city has ran very well. Well, I think we're starting a new year, and I think we're kind of just kind of digging in right now a little bit, but uh Craig, anything that you have?
We had a museum board meeting um last night, no, Tuesday night, sorry, Tuesday night, um some Jamie um um just finishing up, setting up, so she has, is a part-time employee, she's also taken a part-time job on a temporary basis with the State History Museum, and uh so she has one of her assignments there, she is um was um preparing um events and activities and displays and things to go into the State Capitol Building. So earlier this week, she was down to the State Capitol with acquisition, uh setting up events and things, displays of America Two Fifty Celebration that will be in the Capitol, um so she wasn't at our board meeting, but uh we went through all the bylaws, we elected new, uh actually not being the same same officers, but re-elected officers uh for the the board, um um went through collections reports, um I'm trying to remember what it, uh I was, I had a, I had a sheet of paper, I was gonna bring and go through this, but I'll bring it next time, had some really cool collections that just came in for a museum, um I don't know what it was, anyway, so things at the museum are going really well, uh they have a full program of activities for um this next year, the next um Super Saturday, um just speaking of the inclusion committee, um there's an organization called, I can't remember, something Hadithi, it's basically um uh a group that um promotes and talks about historic contributions of of black military people, um and they've been here before, uh they do some, they do some amazing work and talk about the history of the Buffalo Soldiers and different things like that, um and so they're coming back and as a partner uh to museum programming uh coming up here this next month. They got a lot of uh America Two Fifty, that's kind of the museum's theme for all their activities and events and things coming up this year as well, and so um they're started talking about the um Hot Wheels in Hiram uh car show, that'll be the first Saturday in June, and um so yeah, that's gonna be another exciting activity.
Thank you. Nele?
Um I have, as I mentioned, I went to lunch at the senior center yesterday, um Jesse, he's, he does an excellent job, he's, he's really good, and Shannon, that is the cook, she makes really good food, so that's good.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I I was impressed with with what they've been doing there, um I I was surprised to see how many, I think, of all of them that were there, I I met three that were actually from Hiram. We have a lot that come from the surrounding cities, that was something that was interesting. They have their their board meeting on the first Monday at, I think it's, I'm wanting to say maybe eleven o'clock, anyway, I teach on that day and can't make their meetings, but we talked about that, and they're willing to change their meetings, and so-
That's great.
So that I can come, but um and then I have been in touch with the youth council, they also have theirs on the first Monday, but it's at six, and so I can, I can be there for that, um but yeah, I've contacted them, and that's about-
Good.
For now.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Michael?
Um, this last Tuesday, not this last one, I guess the previous Tuesday, when we had our special city council meeting, that meant there was a conflict, we usually meet at eight thirty and have a ham radio to the county, and since we were in here, um my padre and ham and with the ham actually was out in his truck and still communicated, and so we had a up and running ham radio to um communicating to back to the county, so that was a plus.
Good.
We did, uh, we're gonna put in the Hiram newsletter, that we're looking for additional ham operators to help man maintain or mans on those different stake centers and our points of contact, and so we have more than one level deep, two or three if we can get them, so that was something that um is gonna happen. Um then this last uh Wednesday, a week ago, not this last Wednesday, the previous Wednesday, Wellsville City had their city council, and one of their items of of uh topics was, they were looking at the recreation center and joining, so I thought, hey, this would be a good opportunity to go see what's going on in Wellsville, what their thoughts were. I I learned a lot about the actual process of uh creating a recreation um-
District.
District, and there's some pretty detailed steps, and then they opened it to public comment, and um boy, I took a lot of and and notes and names and what they, there was twenty-one different people that communicated, some people got up twice, you know, because they wanted to be heard, but uh it was interesting, because of the twenty-one people, one of them was Chad Wright from, he lives in Wellsville, but he was a proponent for it, but other than Chad, there was two other people that spoke that were for it, all the rest were like, um, well, we think we can save ourselves and the city a lot of money if we don't do this, and um it was uh, I won't say it was heated, they actually were very civil, but they had very strong opinions, and um I just, I just learned a lot just by listening and and writing down what people said, what their thoughts were, um and there was a lot of different ideas that I hadn't thought of before, and um anyway, just I got a lot, got to see a lot of different viewpoints and uh see the process that has to take place in order to create a special service district, so. Anyway, just to learn and experience for me.
Yeah, excellent, then, some point, we really want to uh maybe have Robert come in and and report on, you know, findings and and have a discussion on that, because that that topic isn't gonna come up, so we need to at one point get that on the agenda. Rebecca?
Hey, uh we had a library board meeting last night, and just a couple of quick updates uh for November, the library, Hiram Library, held nineteen programs, had three hundred and twenty-two children attend, and hundred and seventy-nine adults, and they said that was actually a little bit low, just given the month and Thanksgiving and everything that was going on. They also held a teen talent show and had twenty-four teens that participated in that. In December, they had twenty-three programs with three hundred and three children attending and a hundred and thirty-one adults, and the teen advisory committee, about ten of them actually went in and decorated the library for Christmas, and they said it was, they did an amazing job uh decking the library out for Christmas and had a lot of fun doing that. Um, starting this month, they have a new homebound library service, um so there are volunteers that will deliver books, um and this is for elderly or those that are homebound and can't get out, um they can rent up to ten books at a time from a variety of genres and authors, the volunteers will deliver the books to them, and then thirty days later, they'll come back and pick them up and then take their next batch of books to them. Um, there's applications that they have to fill out there at the library, they're also at Black Smith Fork Assisted Living and the Senior Center, um so they're trying to get this program up and going for seniors. February coming up, they're doing their food for fines, and they said this is a huge program, and everyone loves this, but for every non-perishable food item someone brings in, a citizen brings in, they'll waive one dollar of fines that they have, so they said sometimes people just let their fines build up, and they'll take in a bunch of food and wipe it all clean for the month, and it runs through the whole month of February. Um they're also working on a tiny art contest, and that will be for ages four through fifty-five years old, and you can submit any art or sculpture or Lego or anything, but it has to be three by three, and they'll set it up in the art galleries, um submissions will be taken between the first and the fourteenth of February, and then they will vote for the next two weeks, and the winners will be announced March second, so those are some of the things coming up in the library over the next couple of months. Um, some of the typical programs that they have on a monthly basis that are really well-attended are the Lego Clubs, the Magic Treehouse Club, Storytime, uh teen activities and book clubs and adult book clubs, and then um Emily Coltrane, the library director, did mention that they were able to book the Logan Pool for the kickoff party, um so that was, that was a big deal, so that's scheduled for June first in the city's, oh no, sorry, that's for the closing party, the kickoff party for the summer reading program will be June first at the city square, and they'll have the bounce houses, the climbing walls, they're gonna have food trucks this time, um and a big party, they're gonna try and have some more things for adults, there's a lot for kids, the climbing walls and the bounce houses, but they're gonna try to have some more things for the adults as well, while the kids are off doing that, and then the pool has been reserved for the closing party on July thirtieth at seven thirty P M, and the library staff and board members will be there helping and handing out pizza and um celebrating with them, um so that's what's going on at the library for the next couple of months, and they meet every other month, so the next board meeting will be in March, and I'm still trying to make contact with the school district uh representative for Hiram, I've reached out a couple times, so just waiting to hear back to find out when their meetings are.
Thursdays.
Every Thursday, once a month?
Um, almost every Thursday.
Every Thursday?
But it seemed like, I was the rep last last year.
Oh, we-
I could never, I could never attend because we always have the council.
Oh, okay.
They're at five thirty as well.
Okay, well, I've reached out, so I'm waiting to hear back from them, but that's all I have.
Good, great report, great report. Here, I remembered what I was forgetting, can I share?
Please, yeah.
Go ahead, just add something quickly, so one of the um the collections items that the museum was able to to get, just just acquire from us, um just recently at the end of last year, um was a, the selection of eighteen eighties improvement era magazines that were held from the, um I think it's Jen's Peterson family, who was one of the original settlers, people that came here to Hiram, and with that is um is a travel trunk from the family that they brought with them uh from Prussia, and immigrating from Prussia and coming here and then coming eventually, eventually coming to Hiram, and so that's now a part of our our museum collections, it's pretty, uh that's that's kind of cool just to share that as well.
When is it at the museum? Is there currently?
It's there now, yeah.
For how long?
It's the museum, so it was donated by the family to the museum, so.
That's a great, that's a great collection, that's good to, good to know. Oh, well, thank you all for your reports, uh um I guess my report, um we met with the, just matter of information, we met with West Point Dairy on Monday uh for about a four, four and a half hour meeting, and talked about their expansion, they will be expanding a hundred and nineteen percent of what they're at right now, so it's a, it's it's a significant uh expansion. Uh we talked about their their water and their power usage, and uh it's really quite an incredible uh facility, uh they do a, uh they have a closed system, water system, where they bring it in and recirculate a lot of their water inside their facility, uh they polish the water, they call it, and make it as clean as it is when it comes in, so they're, they are saying that their their water consumption may actually go down a little bit, and their uh their affluent going to the the waste treatment plant will also decrease, is what they're telling us, uh it's an, it's an incredible operation with the amount of butter they're, they are producing, um they're going to raise their production to almost six point five million pounds per week of butter, and that goes out of that plant, and it's, it's just unbelievable to watch the operation as it, uh we got a full tour today, and um it's uh it's pretty remarkable to see uh an operation that size that's producing that amount of butter that's being shipped out, so um we're very fortunate to have West Point Dairy in in Hiram City, they they really are a significant contributor to not only employment, but to our tax base, but to just have a a very good, clean industry like that that is part of, part of Hiram. Very good people to work with, they're very accommodating, um and are willing to help the the city in in any way they possibly can, so just uh very pleased with with that uh that company down there and what they're doing. So that's one, and the rest of the week is run together. Stephanie would, she keeps me extremely busy and uh and we uh we're just doing some good things, um of course, we have our staff meeting weekly, and I would just pass this on to you that we have an incredible staff, um we're working through some issues on, as I've mentioned earlier, um with the software, but we're working through some good issues that I think are going to really benefit the city in in a lot of good ways, and uh so we're excited about that. So that's all I have, appreciate uh all you're doing, feel free, anytime to stop in and and visit with me in the office, if you've got questions, concerns, call, and I'm happy to talk to to any one of you at any time, and uh look forward to to great things.
So, thank you.
That's all I have.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
So moved, so moved, thank you.